bin Salman on Friday. I mean, once you get past the fist bump, what did they actually talk about?
So this meeting happened behind closed doors and we don't really know what the mood was or what exactly was said, but Biden did give a speech afterwards talking about it.
And thanks to many months of quiet diplomacy by the staff, we've accomplished some significant business.
He said that they had made progress on a number of fronts. One of the things that he announced was that Saudi Arabia would allow direct flights from Israel and overflight of civilian aircraft from Israel. This is a significant change because many Arab countries, including Saudi Arabia, had long boycotted Israel by not allowing its flights to fly over their territory.
And we agreed to work together to deepen, extend the Yemen ceasefire and has been in place more than three months, resulting in the most peaceful period in Yemen in seven years.
The ceasefire has been in place since April and had been agreed upon by the warring parties that had recently been extended. So, you know, he said that he would continue to work with the Saudis to keep it in place. And finally, one of the most concrete things to come out of this meeting was actually indirectly about China.
Saudi Arabia will invest in new US-led technology to develop and secure reliable 5G and 6G networks.
Biden announced that the United States was going to cooperate with Saudi Arabia to build 5G and 6G networks inside the kingdom. So this is very clearly an effort by the United States to show Saudi Arabia that we can help you get the technology that you need and that you don't need to go to China for it.
But what about Jamal Khashoggi? I mean, did they talk about that? Biden said he would bring it up, right?
Well, it's definitely clear that they talked about it.
Respect to the murder of Khashoggi.
The question is, what exactly was said?
I raise it at the top of the meeting, making it clear what I thought of it at the time and what I think of it now.
Biden, the story that he tells about is that he confronted the Crown Prince very directly and that he said, I believe that you're responsible for this crime.
He said he was not personally responsible for it and he took action against those who were responsible.
That the Crown Prince basically denied it and said, I didn't order it. And Biden said, well, I think that you did.
For an American president to be silent on an issue of human rights, is this consistent with inconsistent with who we are and who I am? I'll always stand up for our values.
The Saudis came out with quite a different version of it and said, no, actually, it wasn't that contentious. It did come up briefly in the context of human rights, but that was about it. And so we don't really know what was said.
So Ben, at the beginning of this conversation, you told us that Biden had two very specific things he wanted to address in the meeting, Iran and oil prices. So what happened with those two issues? Let's start with Iran.
So there's no reason to think that Biden came out of this meeting with very specific, concrete results. And so the United States is looking around for a Plan B. If we can't sort of get Iran into an agreement, we have to find some other way to deter it and to keep its activities in the Middle East in check.
Okay. And what about oil?
On oil prices, nobody wanted to make an announcement on oil prices. I mean, Biden certainly wouldn't want to talk about it because he was trying to play down the idea that this trip was about oil prices. And the Saudis wouldn't want to talk about it because they want people to stop thinking of them as the world oil pump, partly because the Saudis are very close to the amount of oil that they can produce. They don't really have the possibility to just open the taps and put a bunch more oil in the market. And so there's no reason to expect that we're going to see drastic reductions because of this meeting and the prices that Americans see when they drive to their gas stations in the next few weeks.
Ben, what's your sense of how effective this meeting was overall for Biden? Was his calculation to meet with Mohammed bin Salman worth it?
Well, I think in the short term, it was a blow. He had basically set himself up in a staring contest with another world leader and he lost. He said that he was not going to meet with this guy. He was not going to talk to him. And next thing you know, he's getting off the plane in Saudi Arabia to go talk to him about things that are very important for the United States. You know, we'll have to wait and see sort of how things work out with Iran and how things work out with oil. But he definitely did not get back on the plane with things that he can come back and show to Americans as big victories from this trip. And for Mohammed bin Salman, this is really a coup. This is a victory. He has effectively won the staring contest with the president who said he was going to ostracize him, who was going to treat him as a pariah. Mohammed bin Salman basically doubled down, stuck to his guns, bided his time, and sure enough, when the time came, the President of the United States came to meet him inside of his own palace. So he can very much take this to his domestic audience and he can show them, here I am interacting openly with the President of the United States and really kind of market this as a sign of approval and validation that will give him a lot of momentum going forward to do whatever it is that he wants to do next inside of Saudi Arabia.
So in short, the meeting was a win for Mohammed bin Salman, not so much for Biden?
Yes.
Ben, thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Hubbard is Beirut Bureau Chief for The New York Times.
The Daily is supported by Progressive Insurance. With the Name Your Price tool, car insurance options are designed around your
Good evening.
We are going to call the July 18, 7:00 PM, Roanoke City Council regular session to order. I will ask our clerk, Ms. McCoy, to call the roll.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Here.
And a quorum. And Mr. Bestbitch is absent today and Mayor Lee, of course.
And Mayor Lee, both absent. Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we do have a quorum. I am going to ask our own Miss Councilmember, Anita James Price, to do the invocation and I will follow her with a pledge of allegiance. If you could stand, please.
Please bow with me. Most gracious and wonderful Heavenly Father, we pause first to say thank you. Thank you for all the many blessings you have already given us, both seen and unseen, and for your divine protection. Heavenly Father, you know our needs, our circumstances, our fears, our health concerns, and all our struggles. We may not know the future, but we know if we trust in you and hold on to your unchanging hand of love, you will see us through it all. And now I ask you to be with us. Bless us with your guidance as you lead God and direct us in these proceedings. May you order our steps in all that we say and do, that we remember each other and our responsibility to this city, to each man, woman, and child, that you bless us, that we may be a blessing to them all. Thank you, dear Heavenly Father, for your love and your peace that we need now more than ever. We thank you for hearing this prayer and all our petitions in your name and all that is holy. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Again, welcome, everybody. Make sure you give yourself, we got a full house tonight, give yourself enough room to where you feel comfortable. But thank you for joining us this evening. And first I will call, you got a question, Ms. Price?
No, I'm just saying hi.
Okay. Anybody else want to do some greetings?
Some shout outs.
Some shout outs from the dais?
Sorry.
Okay. You ladies are, I am going to ask my colleagues while they're doing the shout outs to pull up, to do a certification of our closed meeting.
I move with respect to any closed meeting, just concluded that each member of City Council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
I will. Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye. And the motion passes. Just giving you notice that council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RVTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/ronokva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf and for the hard of hearing. We have Item A, a presentation and acknowledgement, and I would like for Doug Jackson and the cultural coordinator to come to the podium, join me at the podium, and anyone else that they would like to join them.
Did he leave?
He's here.
He's down the hallway.
I'll head on down to the podium.
He was still showcasing.
Oh, yes, he's still showing off. Showcase.
Maybe he didn't realize that we'd get this far on the agenda so quickly.
Have you and anyone else you would like to join you?
Well, this is out here.
Well, look up a little closer here, because we like to get in the center of the, you don't realize you're on TV. So I would like to present you all with this proclamation. And Mayor Lee is not here, unfortunately, but I would instead. It's the Year of the Artist. Whereas the city of Roanoke builds its strength upon the great assets of this place and talents of our people, whereas the arts, including music, dance, drama, visual arts, and literature, embody much of what accumulated wisdom and imagination of humankind and can help us better understand.
They can't hear you.
Oh, the art TV. Whereas more than 320 local artists have enrolled to explore community improvement through the arts, whereas the city of Roanoke, through the Roanoke Arts Commission, has applied for and received funding from the National Endowment for the Arts to Engage Artists through the Roanoke Self Portrait Project, the City of Roanoke Artists in Residence Program, and the Art Matters Grants, Advancing Wellness, Justice, and Inclusion. Whereas the artists participating in these programs will engage in the most pressing questions facing our city and its people. Whereas 49 artists, self-portraits of some of these artists, now fill the municipal building's fourth-floor gallery, illustrating the work aspirations and care of the artists for our community. Whereas all City of Roanoke residents have the creativity and the ability to positively contribute to their neighborhood, care for those around them, and engage in issues they care about. And whereas the artists participating in these programs are modeling the way for the action-oriented leader in all of us. Now, therefore, I, Vice Mayor Patricia Whiteboy, on behalf of Sherman P. Lee, Sr., of the City of Roanoke, do hereby proclaim the 12 months from July 2022 through June 2023 throughout this great, seven-time All-America City as the Year of the Artist. Congratulations to you all.
I'm Megan Sharp. I'm Chair of the Roanoke City Arts Commission, and thank you, Vice Mayor Whiteboy, and thank you, council members, and really our entire city for your ongoing support of the arts in our community. We all build our community together. There are many in this room who volunteer a great deal of time and energy to make our community a better place. Right now, we have 48 self-portraits of artists reflecting our community and their role in it out in the hallway. And if you haven't had a chance to see those, it's an amazing collection and we're so excited that they will be part of the gallery. I would like to ask all the portrait artists who are in the audience right now to either stand or wave your hand so we can applaud you. Second, we're also, as you know, kicking off the City of Roanoke's Artist in Residence Program, and we have some of our artists in residence with us tonight. So if you are an artist in residence, would you please stand or raise your hand? Our artists in residence are going to be doing great work all around the city, engaging our residents in art throughout the year. Finally, we also have applications available at roanookarts.org for our Arts Matters Grants. And our Arts Matters Grants are important because we're asking community members to propose projects that advance justice, wellness, and inclusion. And I'd like to ask any Art Matters grantees, if you're here tonight, to please stand and be recognized. Finally, the art, and all of this would not be possible without the work of the Roanoke Arts Commission. I know we have many volunteer Arts Commission members in the audience tonight. Would you please stand or wave and be recognized? Thank you, everyone, and we are so excited to celebrate the Year of the Artist with all of you.
Thank you. Thank you. And Doug, the actual proclamation. Congratulations to all of the artists and thank you, Megan and Doug. And this is the actual proclamation. Who wants it?
You know what? How about?
Thank you.
Yeah, there's a camera.
Thank you.
A petition for an appeal filed by Elaine Fleck and Richard Norman, appealing a decision of the Architectural Review Board denying a request to install solar panels on the south-facing side of the home at 535 Mountain Avenue Southwest. Richard Norman is the spokesperson. Ms. Norman?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Whiteboy and City Councilmembers. Thank you for taking the time to listen to my appeal this evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right, I have three points I'd like to make about my appeal. First is the arbitrary nature I perceive of the approval process.
Mr. Norman, the background noise, I think the mic is on, but the background noise was a little bit loud. If you want to start over.
Okay. There are three points I want to make tonight about the ARB's denial of my application to place solar panels in my home at 535 Mountain Avenue. The first is what I consider an arbitrary nature of their approval process of installing panels in the Old Southwest District. Basically, south-facing homes are disadvantaged to north-facing homes. So let me explain it as best I can and try to clarify it for you. If you own a home facing south, like mine, which is, and the south-facing side of the home is the most efficient place to put solar panels, you don't want to put them on the north side, you want to put them on the south. But since the south-facing, your house faces the street, you're automatically denied. However, if you live across the street and your house faces north, you could put them on the south side of your house because that's where you want to put them anyways, even though the south side of that house can be seen in many instances from the next street over, which would be Highland Avenue. Let me give you an example, a couple of examples of how this is just disadvantaged to self-facing homes. If you were to walk outside of Joe Cobb's house and take a left on Highland Avenue and then take a left on 4 and 1/2 Street and walk to Mountain Avenue, at the corner of Mountain Avenue and 4 and 1/2 Street, there's two houses facing north. They have beautiful southern exposure. They, according to ARB, could have solar panels placed on their home. Now, the problem with that is they're clearly visible from the street. In fact, the home on the east side of 4 and 1/2 Street, you can see from the corner of Highland and 4 and 1/2 Street. And then as you walk down, you can see the house on the east side, which look pretty old, and the other house. So they're clearly visible from the street. And if you walk down Highland Avenue, which are often done, I look over to Mountain, or walk down Washington Avenue and look over Highland, there's examples again where if you put solar panels on the southern-facing side of those houses, they'd still be visible from the street. Now, the difference with my house is I'm surrounded with a huge amount of vegetation. There's huge vitias, which never lose their leaves, they stay on all year long. So if you're walking east or west on Mountain Avenue, you wouldn't be able to see where I would like to install my solar panels. And in the summertime, and most of the year, I got these two big maple trees that are full of vegetation, as well as grape myrtles, which means you could actually only see my solar panels this time of year if you're standing about this far away from my house. You have to be directly in front of my house. You couldn't see it from across the street. Now, the ARB did approve a solar installation on 6th Street between Jeanette and King George. Again, it was put on the south side of the house, not on the front. But again, as you're walking down 6th Street, it's clearly visible there. And not only at 6th Street, but it's clearly visible from the corner of Jeanette and 6th Solar panels are not permanent fixtures. I want you to understand that. There's no alteration that has to be done to the house of the roof line. No historic changes have to be made. Solar panels are pretty much like in the 80s and 90s when people started putting satellite dishes on their house. And then when the technology changed in the 2000s, they started taking the satellite dishes off and there was no difference in the appearance of the house. There were no structural differences were done to the house. And the same thing with solar panels. If somebody bought my house in five years and said, yeah, I'm not sure I liked that up there, they could easily uninstall it and there would be nothing that we'd have to do to change the appearance of my house. So there's no historical change has to be done. The ARB says they realize the updates need to be made, and they're in the process of creating a committee to make those updates. However, it will take at least a year for any of those updates to be implemented, which in my view is too long considering this climate crisis we're in right now. So that's my first point. My second point is I presented the ARB with a petition of nearly 70 signatures of my neighbors, and I only canvassed from 6th Street to Franklin Road on Mountain Avenue and Highland Avenue and a few parts of Day Avenue. If I were to canvas all of Old Southwest, instead of getting 70, I'm sure that I got 280, probably got four times of all of that. I also went to an Old Southwest meeting, presented my position and what I was doing in my application, and was met with a positive response. In fact, people signed my petition. And I'd like to point out, the last I looked, the majority of the OSW current board members signed my petition. They're supportive of it. There is a new demographics moving into the Old Southwest. They're not hung up on artistically historical accuracy. You know, they are ready to embrace renewable energy. That's my second point. This is my third point, which in my opinion is the most important point. Climate change is real and is happening now. It's not a tomorrow's problem. The devastating effects of climate change are being felt throughout the planet. Droughts and extreme weather patterns such as the one we just witnessed in Buchanan, which had torrential downfall and flooding that created a lot of damage. Every week, there's a new report issued by a scientific or governmental committee saying that we need to wean ourselves off of fossil fuel and start using renewable energies. In fact, just yesterday, as I was reading the New York Times, the leading story on the Sunday New York Times was, as the planet cooks, climate stalls as a political issue. And then there was two sub, extreme heat continues to march across Europe. The temperature was 100 degrees in London today. And then the third one, Texas and the central plains can see the hottest summer temperatures this week in what is already the most historically hottest period in their history. And what are the recommendations? It's always the same. We have to begin to wean ourselves off of fossil fuels and start embracing renewable We cannot afford, in my opinion, to cling to this elitist opinion as to whether something is historically accurate or correct. Those days are past. That train is long gone. As I said earlier, this is not tomorrow's problem to be left to your children, my children, our grandchildren, because by that time, we'll probably be too late. This is, the planet is burning and we need to act responsibly now. I'm willing to make the investment in renewable energy with your permission.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Norman before I bring up Mr. Mason?
Yeah. I've got a couple of questions real quick. Mr. Norman, thank you so very much for coming here tonight. I certainly do agree with you that the need for renewable energy, the necessity is here now. In the staff report, it was recommended that the solar panels be placed elsewhere. And I heard what you said about it needs to be south-facing. But could you speak to that? Are those viable? Are those other suggestions that they made?
No, and I'll tell you why. There's two points that should be made by that. I think you all received a letter from me before, last month, stated the new Virginia policy of solar panels cannot be denied a homeowner in a, what's that?
What? Homeowners Association.
In a homeowners association if they reduce the efficiency of the panels by 10% or they increase the cost by 5%. To try to put them in the back of my house would do both. The solar company, I was hoping would be here to explain this, said that to put it in that building in the back, two things would happen. First of all, reduce the efficiency by 50%. Second of all, you have to dig a trench all the way to the back of my house to meet, to install it to the side of the house where it has to be by the power. That would be a phenomenal amount of money. It would cost a lot of money plus to do the destruction of the cost.
Okay, thank you. I thought that it was worth hearing pros and cons on both of those options. So, thank you. That's the only question I have right now.
And I think you all, did you receive that letter from Terry today?
solar panels be placed elsewhere, and I heard what you said about it needs to be south-facing. But could you speak to that? Are those viable? Are those other suggestions that they made?
No, and I'll tell you why. There's two points that should be made by that. I think you all received a letter from me before, last month, and stated the new Virginia policy of solar panels cannot be denied. A homeowner in a, what's that called?
Homeowners Association.
In a homeowners association if they reduce the efficiency of the panels by 10% or they increase the cost by 5%. To try to put them in the back of my house would do both. The solar company, the office hoping would be here to explain this, said that to put it in that building in the back, two things would happen. First of all, reduce the efficiency by 50%. Second of all, you have to dig a trench all the way to the back of my house to meet, to install it to the side of the house where it has to be by the power. That would be a phenomenal amount of money. It would cost a lot of money, plus to do the destruction of the cost.
Okay. Thank you. I thought that it was worth hearing pros and cons on both of those options. So, thank you. That's the only question I have right now.
Did you, and I think you all, did you receive that letter from Terry today?
Something today?
Terry Maguire?
Yes.
So in that letter, he mentioned that you all, that all passed the resolution in October saying you would support renewable energy. And as I said before, in my, you know, I did that petition. I knocked down all these doors, talked to people at the Old Southwest meeting. Not one, not one voice of opposition was ever expressed to me. Everybody embraced it, said, "Yes, go ahead and do it. We wanted to do it in our house." So it's this whole elitist attitude that it's not historically correct is just playing out of place in 2022. And in the case it was, it's set in my house. If, Joe, have you ever walked by? It's so covered with vegetation, you couldn't see it anyways. Who would even notice it?
Okay. If there are no other questions, oh, thank you. Mr. Mason?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Whiteboy, and members of council. I would be, I can speak for the ARB and tell you that there is not a soul up there that isn't pro-solar. And the fact that a year and a half ago, two years ago, we approved solar panels on the side of a house speaks to that. In this case, the panels are on the front of the house. If we go there, then, you know, he may have this argument, this homeowner, this house may have this argument, the trees are there, well, the trees aren't forever. And then other folks that have a similar house down the street that doesn't have any trees are going to come here and say, "Hey, we, you know, he has solar panels on the front of his historically accurate house. We want them too." So we just, we couldn't get there at this moment. So I know that we've mentioned a couple of times in the last year or so that we felt like that there are some guidelines that maybe we need to consider. And the last time the guidelines were reviewed and updated was 2011. So it's 11 years. And so we've been talking about the things that we most often have conflict with, you know, or struggle with. Roofing, windows, gutters was the last time I was here. These things come up. And they are frequently our guidelines. To stick with those really tight is more expensive than maybe an alternative that the homeowner might be proposing. And we're struggling because we'd like to make it more affordable, less elitist. You know, that's where we're trying to get. So right now, I think we've had our third meeting. Once a month, we're coming an extra hour early and sitting down and talking through these items with our, with the staff, your staff, and trying to get to the point where we can then bring to you some suggested changes. Because of this application, we said, "All right, let's, let's put solar panels on the list, too." Although this is only the second time, and I've been on six years, this is the second time, solar panels. First time we approved, second time we didn't. So we, we put it on our, in the study group to review and see whether or not we should make a change or propose a change. And then the way we figured that ought to go down is if we propose the change and you all agree to the change, then the entire Old Southwest neighborhood gets to speak on it, not a subset. That's where we are.
Mr. Mason, also, is it correct that the board voted 4-0 not to issue a certificate of appropriateness to allow installation of the solar panels on the south side of the property located at 535 Mountain Avenue?
That's correct.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Mason? Okay, Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. How are you doing, Mr. Mason?
Hi.
You mentioned, I just want to get understanding, where you mentioned that the last time you all heard, the ARB had a situation, it was for solar panels on the side?
Yes, ma'am.
So we, am I correct in reading that this gentleman wants to put it on the front, but the others or the law requires you to put it on, or your guidelines require to put it on the back?
Side or back?
Oh, side or back, but not front?
Yes.
But it's in your guidelines for side or back, but not the front of the house?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Cobb, you said you had a question?
Yeah. Bill, I appreciate you kind of giving the context. I know we've talked about these guidelines and the review process for some time, and I'm glad they're underway. I'm really interested and concerned that, you know, we had, we just adopted a 2040 comprehensive plan. And it's very forward-thinking in terms of renewable energy. And several of the points, you know, talk about making sure we have policies and best practices in place for green building and renewable energy, and that would include residential properties as well as commercial. I've got, I don't know that you can answer this question, Bob. Maybe you or city staff could look into this for me. Do we currently know how many households in the city of Roanoke have solar panels and where they're located in the city?
Probably can get a pretty good estimate through the, through the different programs that we have in place, because many of them have sought and secured some kind of financial assistance as well. So probably we can find that number out, at least close.
And could we also find out where they're located on, whether they're located on the, the house itself, or if they're located in, on land?
That would probably be more, more challenging, because I think we'd be able to tell if there's a property that has solar, but whether or not, you know, where they're specifically located, I don't know.
Okay. I guess my point in asking all of that is I know review processes take a while, and I know that input takes a while, and that's all critical and important. But I also think this is an opportunity to say, "Look, this is, this is what we, we want to model, and how best can we do that?" You know, what might that look like? So that, that, my first question, point is really that process point. And tied with that is how do we adapt our historical district's guidelines to reflect our climate emergency in action? And that, in my mind, can't take forever. So is, can these guidelines be adaptable in such a way that we do them, you know, I think when something comes before us, it's a great time to review that and, and adapt the guidelines, along with doing the whole big picture. And then if you find that you have to go back and amend those, you can. That's, but that's how I look at process, and other people may look at it differently. My parents installed solar panels on the front of their house, on the roof. They were very visible in the 1980s, when no one else was doing it. So I've been a fan of solar for a very long time. And then they were kind of clunky. I mean, the panels were huge. They had like four panels. They were like tents. They were very visible, but the message was clear, too. We want to utilize this renewable energy to, to help our, you know, heat our house, cool our house, all the things that solar can do. And it's a bit frustrating to me that we're, I feel like we're still well behind where we need to be as a state, as a community, as a nation regarding renewable energies. But your task as an ARB is to work within the guidelines that you have and think about best-case scenarios, what you need to rule now and what you need to rule then, which, and that's why I understand why you ruled the way you did. So I'm just trying to think if there was, there was one other question I had, and maybe this is for you, Richard, Mr. Norman. The placement of the solar panels probably has a lot to do with the, the way your roof is shaped. So for example, if, if they said to you, you could put them on the side of your roof, do you have a side of your roof, or is it just south-facing and north-facing?
Well, south-facing obviously would be the most, on the sides, there would not be enough, enough sun to make it a cost effective. I'd like to respond about this, Mr. Mason, and he talked about that house on Sixth Street.
If you want to, if you want to come up and use the mic so that our folks watching can hear everything.
Mr. Mason says they approved, admits they approved that house on Sixth Street, on that, solar panels. First of all, the old models, like you said, mine are of a smaller profile, and they're clearly visible from a long ways away. You couldn't see my solar panels unless you were standing right in front of my house. And the other thing that annoys me about the ARB is the continual disregard for the residents of OSW who support my application. Are there any OSW members on your board this year? The ARB should be totally OSW board, because we're the, our LSW residents, because we're the people who have to live there and abide by their regulations.
Mr. Norman, I will just say that they, the ARB is appointed by this council. So if you have some questions or comments about how they operate, you might want to address them to me or to another member of this council that can answer your question, because they are following the guidelines that we asked them to set forth. So I don't want there to, I don't want you to think that they're doing something, you know, that prohibits you from doing what you want to do. They are acting on our behalf.
Right. But let me just point to arbitrariness of their decision to approve that one on Sixth Street. Their, their whole arbitrary requirement that it not be on the front, on the sides, as I pointed out, Joe Cobb's neighborhood, which is just a block from me, you're standing on the corner of Four and a Half Street, you would be seeing solar panels glaring at you, even from a block away. Just because they're not on the front of the house means they're historically accurate to put it on the back? When they're still clarified, but still clearly visible from the city, from the street?
Mr. Norman?
I mean, I mean, really, it's totally arbitrary and inconsistent.
Your questions or comments to this council, please.
Okay. It's totally arbitrary and inconsistent. You could have, as I said before, everybody who lives on the corner with a north-facing house would be in the same situation. They could put solar panels on the back of the house, which would be visible from the street.
Okay.
And that would be okay.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cobb, you still have the floor. I guess you had a question for Mr. Norman, but I want to make sure we stay on track here.
Yeah.
Because we still have Mr. Mason at the podium.
I guess just for clarification, Mr. Mason, you said that in your six years, you've only had two?
That's correct.
Two applications to, in an historic district?
Yes.
And can you clarify for us how many historic districts we have in Roanoke that you all give oversight to?
There are two, the downtown and the Old Southwest.
Okay.
If I may comment?
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Mason.
We weren't arbitrary. There is a specific guideline that says, "Don't put them on the front." That, we allow them on the side. Where we were aware of the position of this house speaks to the fact that, hey, we lean that way towards solar. But this is very specific. In my little bit of research I've done, since we began this little subcommittee to study the guidelines, I can't find any historic districts that approve, you know, street-facing like that, front-facing solar panels. And so we're looking to see, you know, what's the solution? How do we, how do we get there? You know, I mean, it's, it's nothing personal. And I can tell you that when I went to the Old Southwest meeting just a month ago, I had people telling me, "Nothing should change. It ought to be just as strict as it is, and nothing about windows, nothing about roofs, certainly not solar panels." So there is a, there's a debate, and we need the citizens' input. We need all their input, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Cobb?
No, thank you.
Anyone else have any? Ms. Price?
Well, I want to follow up on what Mr. Cobb just brought up. I appreciate the fact that you recognize that times are changing. And I, my dilemma is the time constraints. Because, and I'm glad to hear that the ARB recognizes, okay, we may need to catch up with the times, and that you're exploring, looking at the guidelines and seeing what needs to be, what needs to be changed. So I guess my question is, how long is that going to take, and how will that impact Mr. Norman in installation of his solar panels that he's requesting now?
Honestly, I don't know. I mean, we, when we've talked about this, you know, there's a cycle where we come up with the ideas of things that might be changed and bring it to you, and then we go out to the city. So I think, yes, it's going to take a year or so. Probably, you know, I mean, yes. I'm, I would suggest that a change so drastic that we would put solar panels on the front, exposure of a house deserves that. And we, the citizens need a chance. And let me tell you, if it come down and a great number of people supported that, and you all supported it, then I'm going to stand up and back it up. And, but until we have that, we don't. And we have a longstanding guideline, and we have a lot of people that come to our meetings. There are at least two of us right now. How many live in Old South? I mean, I live there. So we're invested in the neighborhood. We care about it. We want it to be a great and sustainable place to live, and we want people to be able to afford to upgrade their houses. And if people want to do something exemplary like this, we'd like to find a way for them to do it, just not on the front, right down.
For now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Mr. Mason, I have just one question, and I'll let you take your seat.
Yes, ma'am.
When you do engage the community on issues that come up like the gutters, and I remember one time the windows, do you all have some sort of political, I mean, community engagement to get input from all of the citizens or the residents in particular in those historic districts?
We've never done it, or at least not since I've been on the board or paying attention, so to speak. So it would be staff. So it would be the city manager's group who would handle, you know, we'd come up with the potential changes. You all would review them, agree, disagree, whatever, but then I guess they'd get put out by staff to, to, for comment.
Yeah. And that's where I'm going with it. And this has nothing to do with you. I just think maybe we need to make sure that we're engaging, you know, the community or the people that this would impact
Yes, ma'am.
in the future. I appreciate you taking our questions and all the comments, because you're just doing what we've asked you to do. And I appreciate you coming here, you know, time after time and defending those guidelines. They are important.
If I may, too, the other, you know, the other thing to keep in mind is, as has been stated multiple times, the, the ARB, of course, is responding and interpreting and reacting to a set of guidelines that you all have adopted and put in place.
Exactly.
And so if there is a desire to change those guidelines on a different timeline than what's being discussed by the, by the ARB, that's purely in your discretion. In other words, you can tell the ARB, you know, in three months, we expect to see a change, and then there would be a process put in place, or six months, or whatever it is. I mean, certainly you rely upon them for their expertise and for their input and their insight. But at the end of the day, the policy is yours. And so therefore, similarly can be the timeline in terms of change, if there's a desire to change.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Moon.
In response to what you're saying, Bob, I do recall, I guess it was over a year ago, when we had a similar, I don't know if it was this, the one on the panel, was it windows, I thought council had instructed, when they talked about those H2 guidelines, that they were going to start to review them. And I was waiting for them to come back to council, but as he is, as Mr. Mason is saying, they have just started. So I guess to answer your question, I would, with council's concurrence, that we do look to put a deadline on getting those guidelines, because we're going to continue to have this type of things that keep coming. And we're having to abide by the ARB's decision on the guidelines that council is the ones who are putting in place.
Yeah. I know you did say you were working on them. I did hear you say that.
Yeah.
So, they're working on them. So, maybe they're not, you're not as far along as maybe some, some may think you should be. But I did hear you say you were working on them because it does take time. You're architects, and you're trying to do the right thing. So, we just have to speed it up a little bit. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Thank you. I have a question for you.
Sure.
Would you consider the White House a historical, the White House, a historical building?
Oh, most certainly.
Solar panels were installed in the White House in 1979. Then they were removed and installed again in 2010.
Okay.
And maybe they don't have H1, H2 guidelines like we have here.
That would absolutely...
That, I mean, I, I'm just going to have to, yeah, I'm just not going to let, mad rush on Mr. Mason. He's only doing what this council has asked him to do.
And it's based on those guidelines.
And that's what I, you know, as Vice Mayor right now, I'm going to have to defend him on that.
Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you for that observation.
Yes, sir.
I just want to add to this. You know, you don't have to go too far back in Roanoke's history to know what Old Southwest was, historically. And part of the reason these guidelines were created was to, in the restoration of this, what we now identify as one of our most beautiful neighborhoods in the city, we have these historic guidelines to sustain that. And one of the challenges is, when you have people who care very deeply about their properties and their houses and want to maintain that historical integrity, want to do it affordably, But also want to do it thoughtfully. It's almost like, how do you, how do you interpret guidelines when you have these kind of unique case-by-case situations? I mean, I keep going back to the fact that you've only had two applications for solar panels in six years. Two. So, it's not like there's a mad rush to do this. I mean, on the part of the citizens. And I don't, I don't know what the variables are in that. Maybe it's cost. Maybe it's, we just didn't think about it. Or maybe we're good with the utilities we pay. So, that's part of the challenge, is, is trying to craft guidelines that have a broad enough interpretive range in them that you can have this kind of creativity in an historic district while maintaining the integrity and the long-term integrity. Because if you, if you don't have some limitations to that interpretation, then it gets to the point where anything goes. And forty, fifty years down the road, you risk being back where you were eighty years ago. Now, I'm not saying that's going to happen. But I think that's the tension that you all find yourselves in. And in some ways, that's the tension we've put you in. So, I'm trying to be fair about this because I do understand the tension of it. So, I think it's a, it's a both and. It's important that we look at these things case by case because there have only been two cases of it in six years. But I'd like to know what the reality is in our city as a whole. You know, are we seeing this happening in more residential areas and neighborhoods? What, what kind of permits have we given for this sort of thing? That's not on you. To give us some context, and then to make sure that we expedite this process so that we can hear from people who live in the historic districts. Not just Old Southwest, but downtown. Because that also impacts business owners. Is that, it's residential land commercial, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, that casts the net a little broader. But I think that's really critical that we be able to move on that in a meaningful timeframe. You know, to say, "We want all this back in one month," is not a meaningful timeframe because it's not going to be a thorough process to get the input that's needed. I would say at a minimum, six months. But at least for an initial, here's what we're, we're getting back and hearing. But, but that's one piece of it. The other is the case-by-case piece.
Agreed.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. I do believe we have one speaker signed up. Madam Clark?
Yes. It is Luke Pretty.
Mr. Pretty?
Thank you, Vice Mayor White Boyd, members of Roanoke City Council. First of all, you're doing an excellent job chairing this meeting tonight.
Well, thank you so much.
I know it is your job to defend this institution. And, you know, the red, at least the perceived red tape that comes with that. I first met Richard Normand back in April when I, me and my fiancee first purchased a home in Old Southwest. And he told me almost immediately that he was planning to put solar panels on his roof. And I told him, "You are going to be denied." The Architecture Review Board has rules in place based on having a south-facing roof that if it can be seen from the street, they're going to tell you no. And he said he wanted to apply anyways. He wanted to know what the process was. Told him that, "You're going to have to apply. They're going to have to deny you. And then city council has the authority to either uphold, reverse, or modify that decision." When I think about a lot of things that have been said tonight, I think about authority, I think about policy, what this body does as a policymaking body. The Architecture Review Board guidelines were last updated in 2011. And I'm not sure that at that time it even made any updates with reference to solar. There's a section of code that Richard referenced in one of his letters. And I hate to admit that it really actually doesn't technically apply in this circumstance. The chapter of Virginia Code refers to a homeowners' association and how they're prohibited from denying an application for solar panels in certain circumstances. I may or may not be wrong in asking a question about this because I think about it in zoning. It's my understanding that solar panels are permitted by right in every single section of zoning in the city. It's just within the confines of the historical districts, there are limitations to where they can be placed. With that, in Northern Virginia, they were seeing what was happening with homeowners' associations who were denying them for numbers of households where there are more people who have an opportunity to seek solar. I know we haven't seen as much down here, but part of the reason why, especially in Old Southwest, is you know that if you, you even want to apply, that they automatically have to deny you based on the guidelines that they have. The section of code that they put into place in the General Assembly as part of the Clean Economy Act sought to limit those restrictions in certain circumstances. The specific section that Richard referred to is that, "A restriction shall be deemed not to be reasonable if application of the restriction to a particular proposal would either increase the cost of installation of the solar energy collection device by five percent over the projected cost of the project, or reduce the energy production of the solar energy collection by ten percent below the projected energy production." Where he wants to place them, south-facing is really the only way to collect solar energy. If he puts them on the north side, automatically reduces by ten, ten percent. If he moves them to an accessory structure and has to connect those utilities, it's going to increase the cost by at least five percent. But what I thought was more fitting was, after he finally went through the process and had the denial from the Architecture Review Board, and it's my understanding that at that meeting, that all the members there were sympathetic, but they were following the rules of the policy that was put into place. If it had been updated any earlier, then he might have been approved at that time. But when we met to discuss going over this appeal today, back in May, the power went out. All of Old Southwest lost their power. And one of the benefits that solar energy gives you is that if you have an energy backup storage, you have power for a point in time. Back in 2013, I think we all experienced a Duraco that sent energy out in the city for five, 10 days for most of us. There are benefits that can be seen if this policy moves forward. But I want to ask city council to think, to move forward within what authority they do have. They can either affirm the decision of ARB, they can reverse it, or they can modify it. But I like what was discussed tonight, that you all can send a directive essentially to the ARB to review and update their guidelines by a certain point. But I would also like for city council to consider moving forward with expanding this section of code to make sure that it's clear that it might apply to something like an ARB. I respect and understand the decision that Mr. Mason and they are being made. But if they're told this is the policy, then they will follow that policy, much like everyone on city council does here today. But with one final point with respect to zoning, when I think about Richard Normand's property, and I would invite you to walk there if you haven't yet, his house is almost completely hidden. It's, you're not even sure it's there. And then when you, when you step in just underneath the trees, you can finally see it. It's so interesting because there's so much shade from the trees, but the sunlight hits the roof perfectly. He is someone that wants to take the extra step, wants to put solar panels on it. When I think about, you know, they're already permitted in every zone in the city. When I think about giving him an exception today, I think about the special use permits that are often, city council does have the authority to grant. So, I would ask tonight that city council consider maybe modifying the ARB's decision in some way to grant him this special exception while also asking the, them to review their guidelines at large. And to also send something to the Legislative Committee to consider looking at this statewide. Stephanie Moon Reynolds could work on this with VML to see, is there an appetite between VML, VACO, and the preservation organizations to come to some consensus about what we can do to preserve our historical integrity but move forward with renewables? So, with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor White Boyd and council members. My name's Kevin Earl. I served as acting chair on, on this meeting. And I'm a resident of Old Southwest. I've had the long pleasure of working with the neighborhood and in tandem with Mr. Norman and Ms. Fleck in their leadership activities with the neighborhood as well. And I appreciate what they're doing. I echo the sentiment of, "Go solar." Above all, in terms of the, the review that I performed in my duties on the ARB, I, I researched and learned that historic preservation and solar panels can coexist. There needs to be a bit more creativity with the contractors who are installing to consider how to apply those. Whether an accessory structure can't work, you know, there, there can be, you know, organizations that specialize in both solar and historic preservation will tell you to, to build a structure that, that raises it, you know, on the north-facing structure, but raises it enough that it doesn't minimize that efficiency. I'd say there, there are creative ways to, to make that happen. Other notable historic buildings, the White House, typically they're, they're not visible or they're, they're designed, you know, they're specially designed products. And there are new products coming out. I feel like I get a new email every week about a new product, a more efficient panel, those types of things. But ultimately, they, they can coexist. I, I think the, the ARB would welcome a proposal that gathers the creativity of a contractor who's willing to explore that further. When asked about that, their contractor said they hadn't considered. So, I think there are options there, and I appreciate your time.
Can, can you answer one question for me? I don't know if anybody else has. But there was very little talk about the raising the structure. I know it was mentioned briefly. But could you just speak a little bit more about that so that we're all clear on how that would work?
Sure. So, on, you know, especially when organizations that specialize in this are looking at historic buildings, they look for any flat roof area. That doesn't exist here. So, you have the south-facing side, which is ideal for the collection. Then, if, if you have the, the north slope and you create a structure, rather than putting it all the way out on the accessory structure that has more shade and, and having to bore, which I know is a concern, to, on that north-facing structure, build up some framework to hold the panels so that they are then south-facing or somewhat south-facing in a orientation that would not minimize the efficiency to the degree of concern that would be to just put them on the north-facing direction.
And in your professional opinion, that would obtain the same objective as...
I can't say that it would be the, the same. I don't know. But it was something the contractor said they hadn't considered. So, you know, I think our contractors are often in the routine of doing the standard execution. You know, they do the same thing over and over again. And in a historic district, asking them to take a little creativity to apply it in a different way, to install in a different way, is worth asking them to explore before, before granting approval for a south-facing change in character that may not be necessary. I'd also just add one more thing. You know, relative to the comprehensive plan, I'd say, you know, another component that organizations work toward for situations like this is encouraging and, and working to develop more subscription-based access to solar array power. So, if we build a solar array in a nearby field and allow particularly residents of historic districts that have the challenge, this type of challenge, to have, you know, first access to subscribe to that service. It, it allows people to really physically know where their renewable power is being sourced while still honoring the only historic district of this type that we have in the city. You know, we're not asking this to be applied to every resident in the city. You know, we, we're looking to the guidelines to be applied in this narrow area. And certainly not to discount the option of, of solar, just using some creativity toward that.
Thank you. I appreciate that perspective. So, I think that was, I think that was our last, well, we only had one speaker.
I responded at one point, in terms of solar in the back, it doesn't change, so you have to go. Two things. Contractor did mention that that was unfeasible. That was mentioned to you, that was unfeasible for two reasons. First of all, you're still going to have to dig that trench all the way through the backyard to, to access the side of my house where the electrical is. Second of all, if you added a big thing like this, my God, it would be seen from the high, it'd be seen from all over the place, not to think about your neighbors who live in the back of you, who live on the side of you, who are going to see this big mountain thrusting, it looks like a huge flat-screen TV in your backyard. So, it's not feasible to do that. And I represented and mentioned that to you.
He did not.
Well, he mentioned it to me.
Well, we're not going to, we're not going to have, we, you know, we want to hear from both sides, but we're going to have to do it in a way that, that everybody has an opportunity to speak, and we're not going to go back and forth at each other. I, we, I heard, we, I think this council has heard exactly what you had to say about the digging the trench and the, and the structure. I asked the question because I was trying to figure out how that would work, and I, and some others may have been curious. But I think that question has been answered.
In my house, it wouldn't work. Thank you.
I don't, I don't know that there's been any questions. So, for this council, we have three options. Two, well, one is to uphold the, the ARB's decision. The other is to reverse it, or, and the third, to make some sort of modification. I'm not sure what that would be. But I will entertain a motion.
Can I ask one more question for clarification before we do that? And, and I think this is directed to Mr. Norman. When did you start this process of researching and making the decision that you wanted to install solar panels on your house?
We have a very good friend, who lives in, that's the Raleigh Court area, on the Grand area. She contracted the same people that were going to want to install. They installed it in her, on the, on the, on the street-facing side of the house, and she says it worked beautifully, reduced the bill to almost like $10 a month or something like that. So, when she told me that, that's when I got in contact with the solar company and started the process. So, there are at least one other place, and that's in the, on the Grand.
When, when was that? When, when did you decide to start this process?
Probably last fall.
Last fall?
Yeah.
Okay.
And actually, I actually started the process, and my friend did us do it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
As you can tell, Mr. Normand, and of course, the ARB, it's always a tough decision for council to make a decision. We don't make them that often, or I haven't since I've been on council, because they don't come before us that often. And they are very difficult because we understand the residents' concern. And, and of course, we understand the guidelines set forth by the... concern, and, and of course, we understand the guidelines set forth by the ARB. But, you know, if we can't make a decision tonight, we'll have to, to set, continue it, or postpone it until we can have some discussion among ourselves to determine how we can handle it. If I don't hear a motion right now, I, that, I will have no other choice. Mr. Cobb?
Well, I, you know, we've, we've had one situation in the last year that we actually referred back to the ARB to work out a resolution. It was on the windows.
Well, I was gonna say, on the gutters, we, we made a modification. But you're talking about on the windows.
Yeah, but this was on, this was on the windows.
On the windows, yeah.
And I don't know whatever, if anything, has become of that in the process.
No, I don't remember. We did send it back and ask them.
We did. So I, while, while I think there's some merit in referring back for, you know, to look at, are there any other options? It, it's become clear to me that some of that has been, at least from Mr. Norman's standpoint, that, that is not an option to be more creative. From Mr. Earl, it is an option, so I'm not sure if there could be a resolution that way. So I'm not sure that a motion to refer is going to get us any further down this road.
It doesn't sound.
So I would, I would recommend that we go with one or the other motions. And I can make a motion, and then, then we can just vote accordingly. I, and this is based on, for me, the two factors of wanting to move more quickly. But as this is only the second case in six years, I think it's a case-by-case situation. So I would, I'll make the motion to reverse the decision of the City of Roanoke Architectural Review Board and to grant the request for a certificate of appropriateness to install solar panels on the south-facing side for property located at 535 Mountain Avenue Southwest.
Second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Could you do a roll call?
Yes. Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Price?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Whiteboyden?
Aye, and the motion carries. Moving on to our next item. Our report of the Architecture Review Board recommending City Council affirm its decision, oh, no, that's another one. Yeah, we just did that one.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor, if I could, while we're still on that item. We did have some discussion and did not give any direction on those H2 guidelines as far as a deadline. And based on what you said, Mr. Cobb, I think maybe we could start with instructing them, perhaps for six months, and then see where they're at. But I think we need to deal with that. Because if not, we're going to continue to have to go against them or, or go with them. And so I think this proves that we need to be looking at some type of reviews coming back to council.
Do we need to?
Mr., uh, Mr. Spencer, do we need to make a formal motion for, to do that?
If you wish, but you've just given direction to staff, and I think they've heard.
So you've given it, okay.
And your ruling on this appeal, also make sure that the issue dealing with solar panels is front and center in how they address it.
Yes. Well, not just the issue with solar panels. I think the, the discussion that we had some months ago for, for us to go ahead and, and move forward on reviewing the guidelines, because it may be gutters again next time or windows. So, you know, I, I guess if we would have to assist Earl and, and Mr. Mason, if we would, you know, had, needed to assist you guys in doing that, I think we need to get together.
If a committee needs to be done or whatever, I think we need to.
Yeah, so you're not tasked, yeah, so you're not tasked with that alone. Because that is, that, we're asking a lot for a short period of time, and I, I do realize that. And I thank you for everything that you all have done. And, and Mr. Norman, I hope that you are able to move forward with your panels as expeditiously as you would like. I don't think there's any other business before this council.
We have citizens.
Do we have a citizen? Okay.
Thank you. We have two citizens.
Okay, 'cause I didn't get anything. You have them up there.
Right, I have them.
Okay.
We have three citizens. Lauren Lawson.
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Lawson, and my pronouns are she/her. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of a group of like-minded individuals in Roanoke and the neighboring area to ask that the Roanoke City Council take a resolute stance to protect the right of every community member to bodily autonomy and privacy by means of protecting abortion access rights. There is no decision more impactful than whether and when to have children. Several states have enacted laws that effectively stripped this decision from their constituents, whether through complete bans on safe abortion or an effective ban on contemporary birth control. I say contemporary because abortion and other means of birth control predate even the earliest days of our country, including, but not limited, to a book written by Benjamin Franklin on methods of abortion. The ability to choose is a freedom our country was founded on, something which Franklin and other founders fought for. History proves that it is not possible to ban abortion. It is only possible to ban safe abortions provided by qualified healthcare workers. These professionals live and work in our own city. Furthermore, limiting legal access to safe abortion drives increases in domestic violence and is shown to disproportionately affect some of the most vulnerable community members, including those affected by poverty, people of color, transgender or non-binary folks, and survivors of child abuse or sexual assault. The majority of Americans support legal abortion care, and 88% of Virginians agree that abortion should remain legal under some or all circumstances. While abortion care does remain protected by the laws of our state, Governor Youngkin said on June 24th that legislators should be prepared to introduce legislation when the General Assembly resumes in January regarding, regarding anti-abortion legislation. Kentucky, Tennessee, and West Virginia now severely restrict abortion rights, and as their closest neighbor, Virginia will see an increase in those seeking healthcare. As good neighbors to our bordering states, and like the cities of Richmond and Alexandria have adopted similar measures, we would ask the Roanoke City Council to consider, one, adopting a legislative agenda that seeks to affirm abortion rights in the Commonwealth, and, two, providing funding in the next budget to ensure access to reproductive healthcare and safe abortion services, as well as maternal and child health services for low-income residents. It is crucial that we work together as a whole to keep our communities safe and thriving, especially those facing these life-changing and personal decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and let me just say, 'cause I was getting ready. Now, you, you can have a seat. I was just gonna say that this will be, you know, we give you an opportunity to be heard, but I've neglected to say that if deemed appropriate, that matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council, not everything, you know, we are able to respond to. But if it's necessary, it will be referred to our city manager. Thank you. And that applies to anyone else speaking.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Scheeler. She's not here. And the last speaker is Chris Kraft.
Good evening, Vice Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of council. I'm back. And I'm not happy. I know our great city attorney is working hard, but there's a problem in Roanoke that's, needs to be taken care of, or Roanoke's gonna go to hell in a handbasket. I'll put it that easy. If you don't know by now, the sheets at corner of Orange Avenue and Williamson Road will be closing permanently in September, when they open the new one up the street. They were gonna tear the old one down, remodel it, and rebuild it, but they can't put up with the panhandling, the people coming in there stealing beer at all hours of the night. I witnessed a guy run out with four things of Corona one morning at 4:30 in the morning. They said, "There's no protection in our city." And Chief Roman agrees. He said that there's a new legislation that was passed by the Democrats that tells, and Mr. Spencer can tell me if I'm incorrect, we can't, the police can't tell a person where they can stand. If they want to stand in the median, they can stand in the median. If you go to 13th Street Southeast, you'll see a guy in an electric wheelchair sitting in, on the median. What happens if a car comes out of control and hits that person? The driver ain't gonna be sued, it's gonna be, the city's gonna be sued for letting them up on that, that median. And I'm worried about the city. And I'm worried about the sheets that's being built in my neighborhood. If it's gonna happen down there, I'm scared they're gonna start taking off and coming up to my neighborhood. And I've got neighbors that are prepared to use their Second Amendment rights and protect our neighborhood. We need to do something. We need to figure something out. And another thing, before I came by, while I can talk to y'all about stuff being shoved down the citizens' throats. Well, I want to congratulate Michael Clark, Parks and Rec. He does a wonderful job. As you know, there's a new Tinker Creek Greenway section being built in my neighborhood. Well, when it was brought to us, Michael Clark said there will be no detours or no street closures. Well, about a month ago, there was detour signs up going down my street. I called Michael Clark. He said, "There is no detour in the, my plans for that greenway." Luke Pugh stuck them in there, did not come to the, the Neighborhood Association or anybody. He just decided, "We're gonna put a, a detour, we're gonna close this road." That is not right. If he's gonna close the road or detour, he needs to talk to the citizens that's gonna be affected in that neighborhood. My kids in my neighborhood like to play out in the road, and people coming from the detour are speeding up and down the road, and nobody will stop them. That's what I mean. This, some branches of this city are doing things without going to the citizens and saying, "This is what we want to do. We want to put a detour down East Gate. This is how long it's gonna last. This is what it's gonna involve." He didn't do any of that. He just shoved it down our throats, stuck the signs up and didn't even come to us. I tried calling him. He won't return a call. He had one of his minions call, and the minion said the same thing. "We have the right to do what we want. If we want to put a detour, we'll put it through, down your street." That's not right. We need to work together, the citizens and the city. And I'm sure Mr. Cobb and most of y'all would agree that that needs to happen. I'm tired of things getting shoved down our throats, that we, we, if we work together, we could have made accommodations. But just shoving it, sticking the signs up and saying, "I'm doing this. We don't care what you say," that's not right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, that was the last citizen.
Well, there being no further business to come before the council, the council meeting is adjourned.
It's gonna be two people telling the story. Their names are Rob and Andrea. They're married, and the funeral is for Andrea's grandmother. It takes place in a Ukrainian church, and they don't totally know what's going on because the priest is speaking Ukrainian.
Okay.
And the first thing that got us?